All right. Thanks, Brian. And welcome, everyone, to this October 10, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We've got a proclamation tonight, so I will hand it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Come on in, Ms. Nelms. Not to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
We're still waiting on Andrew, don't worry.
That's right.
You're not the last one.
And if I may have Ms. Crawford and anybody else who would like to come up front for, this is a proclamation for Down Syndrome Awareness Month. We'd love to have you guys up front. Y'all can come stand right up here. And I will read the proclamation, and then I'm sure there will be many photos that want to be taken. Whereas Down Syndrome is the most frequently occurring chromosomal disorder and is the leading cause of intellectual and developmental delay in the United States. And whereas approximately one in every 700 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 6,000 births per year in the United States, with approximately 85 of those annual births occurring here in Alabama. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our communities. And whereas yet despite significant increases in lifespan and intellectual opportunities over the past decade, there is still much work to be done regarding the rights to equality, inclusion, education, medical care, research, employment for the support of people with Down Syndrome. And whereas the city of Homewood encourages all citizens to work together to celebrate the lives of individuals with Down Syndrome, and remember to appreciate and regard every individual with dignity and as a valued member of our community. And whereas now through public awareness, the city of Homewood supports the initiatives of organizations working to ensure people with Down Syndrome have adequate services and are valued by society and can lead fulfilling and productive lives within our community. Now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as December, excuse me, as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in support of individuals with Down Syndrome, as well as their families, advocates, researchers, and medical professionals. I encourage all Homewood citizens to work together to promote and respect the inclusion of individuals with Down Syndrome and celebrate their accomplishments and contributions. And that's it, so, there you go. Come, scoot in, scoot in right here. That's perfect, that's perfect.
Oh, wait, come over here. Turn around, say cheese, okay. Yeah. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Yes, that's right, cheese.
There we go.
Thank you. And there you go, that is for you, thank you. Would you like to say something? You have nothing? Yeah, nothing, okay, all right. Thank you, absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't stress my sentence.
You're very welcome, sweetheart, you're very, very welcome. There you go.
Do we give a high five? No, yes?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all of you for being here. I appreciate it. All right, well, with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation by our own Barry Smith, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
First, a reading from Proverbs 3, 5, and 6. Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding, and in all your ways submit to him; he will make your path straight. Dear Lord who enlightens, thank you for all the citizens represented here of all abilities. Thank you for all the people who come together to work hard for the city and make decisions. I pray that you will guide us always, giving us your wisdom and strength to make hard decisions. I pray that we will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. I pray that we will be fruitful. Father, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive, let us be effective and decisive. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out, in the mighty and matchless name of God the Father. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, in the name of our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, Ms. Salter, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir, Counselor Gualtney.
Here.
Counselor Gier.
Here.
Counselor Alamon. Counselor Wolverton.
Here.
Counselor Sims.
Here.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Nelms.
Here.
Counselor Andrus.
Here.
Counselor Harden.
Here.
And President Wyatt.
Here.
She got one accent, but you saw the quorum.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of September 26, 2022. Those have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion and a second for dispens with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As they're approved 10 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. We've got a couple of vacancies that we need to open up here. The first is the Jefferson County Mental Health Authority. This originally closed on September 26. We did have someone who was interested but was getting more information. That person is now interested in it, in the position, and I believe has already sent his stuff to Ms. Salter, but we do need to reopen it to allow for that process to play out. So we will open that until our next meeting, October 24th. Those will need to be in by 4:30 on the 24th. Next, we have our Complete Streets Advisory Committee position. We, as part of the ordinance that we passed a number of months ago, there are some positions that have to be appointed. The mayor appoints one, we have one to appoint, and the planning commission takes care of one as well. So we need to open our position. Mr. Sims, would it be all right to open it until November 14? Give us a month?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we will keep that one open until 4:30 on November 14.
And it's at large, is that correct?
It is at large, yes. All right, we have two additions to the agenda tonight. Both are going to be added to other new business. The first is 06-10-22, request to authorize the mayor to rescind Resolution 2267 and to cancel the contract with NAFCO. This is being placed on the agenda by myself. And then a second item, 07-10-22, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for ambulance transport services, also brought to us by myself. These are items that were discussed in budget, but the documentation has just now gotten approved, but we certainly want to get it in place as quickly as possible, so we're going to deal with those on other new business tonight. So with those two additions, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Give me one more time, every one at once. Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Wolverton, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is approved 10 to 0. All right, which brings us to our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Gier, everyone's eager tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0, which brings us to the old business agenda. First item, 1709-22, request to authorize the mayor to sign Shades Creek Greenway Phase II CE&amp;I contract with GMC, brought to us by Cale Smith, our city engineer. And we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on October 3rd, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval for this item for the mayor to sign the contract. Five to 0 out of Finance.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 10 to 0, and we resolution 22174. Next item, 2609-22, request for consideration of financial incentives for Piggly Wiggly Development, brought by Murray Legg and by myself. And we'll start, I know we're not considering the item tonight, but we'll start with a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to set a public hearing for October 24th at 6:00 PM.
All right, so we will set that hearing for that time. Next item, 2706-22, request for adoption of ordinance designating annual holidays for employees, brought by myself and Counselor Alamon. And we will start with another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend adding Juneteenth as a recognized city holiday, and will no longer do the President's Day, so we're just doing a swap on that at no additional cost to the city.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to men, section 2-7, entitled Official Holidays of Article 1, entitled In General of Chapter 2, entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the State of Holland. Bill of the day is follows. Section 1, that section 2.7 is entitled Official Holidays is amended to read as follows. Following holidays, New Year's Day, January 1, Martin Luther King, January 15, Good Friday, Friday before Easter, Memorial Day, last Monday of May, Juneteenth, June 19, Independence Day, July 4, Labor Day, first Monday of September, Veterans Day, November 11, Thanksgiving, 4th Thursday in November, and the following Friday, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. Should any of the above-named holidays fall on Saturday or Sunday, the next succeeding Monday shall be observed as such holiday. Section 2, if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdictions, all other parts of provisions remain unaffected. Section 5, the provision or ordinance shall become effective immediately upon their adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier.
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton.
Yes.
Counselor Sims.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Nelms.
Yes.
Counselor Andrus.
Yes.
Counselor Harden.
Yes.
President Wyatt.
Yes. All right, so that's 10 to 0. Now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and we have a motion from Ms. Nelms, a second from Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier.
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton.
Yes.
Counselor Sims.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Nelms.
Yes.
Counselor Andrus.
Yes.
Counselor Harden.
Yes.
President Wyatt.
Yes. All right, so that's also 10 to 0, and we ordinance 2852. Which brings us to our next item, 1109-22, a public hearing set for October 24, 2022 at 6:00 PM for consideration of the Homewood Abatement Board's recommendation for condemnation of the dwelling structure at 117 Hennah Street, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. So we will carry this item over for our public hearing in our next meeting on October 24th. Next item, 1809-22, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Alabama Fire College to designate the Homewood Fire Department Training Center, a regional training center, brought to us by Chief Hill. And we will start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met October 3rd and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Safety. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0, and we resolution 22175. Next item, 1209-22, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at 121 Summit Parkway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth, brought to us by Scott Cook of Code Enforcement. And we will start with another report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met September 19th, and after hearing from Mr. Cook, the committee voted 4 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing. Mr. Cook is already at the podium for us, if you will, just let us know what we're looking at, Mr. Cook.
Okay, the property is owned by Jarland LLC at the same address, 121 Summit Parkway. Since the start of this, I've been by there several times, talked to several of the employees, went by last Thursday, I believe, looked at it once again, they still had some work to do. So if you can show, that's the before, one of the times I was there, and then that's today. And that's before, and that's today. So, big improvements.
Is, do you feel like they're done, or they're still working?
No, they're, they're, they're done.
Okay.
They're done.
All right. Until next time. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I will close the public hearing and ask for comments or questions from Council.
Scott, is your recommendation to drop them?
It is.
Okay, keep that my condition to drop.
Second.
Motion to drop by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0, and that item is dropped. Next item, 1309-22, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at 139 State Farm Parkway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth, also brought to us by Scott Cook. And another report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met September 19th, and after hearing from Mr. Cook, the committee voted 4 to 0 to refer this item back to council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open this public hearing, and Mr. Cook, if you'll let us know about this one.
Okay, it's owned by Landry Seafood House at, out of West Houston, Texas, which is a Landry Seafood House over in State Farm Parkway in Wildwood. You can see the first picture there, that's before, and that's after.
Whoa.
I've had no, no correspondence with them at all, other than the letters and posting of the property.
I let their real estate person know they need to solve that problem.
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you. Saved me a lot of work, head out.
Yeah, Brian, can you show us the before one more time? Wow. Different property. All right, anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close that, the public hearing. Mr. Cook, I'm assuming this is another recommendation to drop, please.
Motion to drop.
Second.
Thank you.
I will tell y'all it's under contract for a car wash. And I'm sure they're a publicly traded entity, you know, who knows what all the issues are with somebody like that, but anyway.
All right, so we have a motion to drop from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0, and that item is dropped as well. Next item, 1506-22, request for permission to work within the right-of-way on Reece Street, 16th Street and alleys surrounding 1707 Reece Street, brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 4, 0 to 1 to recommend approval pending, sorry, is this right?
Yep.
Pending the indemnification agreement, the motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Nelms, Counselor Harden abstained.
All right, so this item and... Thank you, 05-05-22. The parties in each of those are talking with, have been in contact with them today. They are talking with each other, each are reviewing some things, and at their request, we're going to carry both items over tonight to give them some time to do that. So this item will be carried over. All right, yeah.
President Wyatt, sorry, just really quick, if, just in case we do consider those next time, I just want to clarify to you that my motion also included seeing their traffic study.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that was part of it, if we resume the discussion next week.
Absolutely. Next item, 1909-22, request for permission to work in the right-of-way at 514 Edgeland Place, brought to us by Twin Construction and Cale Smith. And another report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement being signed. The motion was made by Counselor Gier and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0, and we resolution 22176. Next item, 2109-22, request for permission for the mayor to sign a letter to Aldott for future conveyance of right-of-way along Forest Brook Drive, brought to us by Cale Smith. And another report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Gier.
All right, we have another motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 10 to 0, and we resolution 22177. Next item, 05-05-22, public hearing set for tonight for vacation of right-of-way of 16th Street adjacent to 2901 Central Avenue, brought to us by Lee and Chelsea Maniscalco and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes. The committee met last week, voted, or, yes, last week, but afforded 0 to 1 to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Sims, and Mr. Alamon abstained from the vote, so it was a 4 to 0 to 1 vote.
All right, so with that, I will go and open the public hearing, and as I noted on the previous item, this item is going to be carried over, so we will leave the public hearing open and carry that over for our next meeting pending whatever the parties end up talking about. All right, next item, 0909-22, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 1604 Roseland Drive, brought to us by Debbie Freeman and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this item was discussed in Special Issues on September 19th, and we voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Ms. Andrus, seconded by Mr. Sims, and I believe we received a late afternoon communication from the homeowner, who was the applicant, asking if we could carry this over because she was not feeling well.
So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and we will keep that open and carry it over for next time, so the homeowner can feel better and come to us next, at our next meeting on the 24th. Next item, 1009-22, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 1919 28th Avenue South, Suite 141, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing, and Mr. Pugh or the applicant, one or the other, if y'all come up to the podium.
Hello.
Hi, if you'll just give us your name and sign in on that sheet, and then explain to us what you're requesting.
My name is Ken LaGrove, I'm here at Representative Scott Services. We're doing a changeover name from You Break, I Fix to Insurance. Same type of signage that's going, that's up there now, will be coming down, and channel letters will be going up along with a raceway box that the channel letters will be attached to, along with two tenant panels on each side of the, of the road sign right there.
Okay. All right, anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from Council.
Wyatt, you can just, we talked about this in committee, but just restate it. This is a variance specifically for the internal illumination. The size actually meets the right, the regulations, it's just the lighting.
Exactly.
And they do have the small panel on the monument sign out front of the development, which has every business on it. Although, when I was out, are y'all changing that out at the same time?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because I noticed that it was still You Break, I Fix.
And that's permitted.
Yeah.
Can you remind us if the other businesses at that development have lit signs?
Yes, they do.
Yes, there are quite a few of them. In fact, almost all of them do, but the new sign on that lumps this in the downtown district and so phases those out.
And I will say, sorry, Alex didn't mean to interrupt. I just drove over there the other day so I could lay eyes on everything. The building is set back from the street because the parking lot is in front. Sorry, I don't know if I have my thing on or not. And the, it's weird because they have, that building has those archways in front of the actual entrances, so it's kind of like tucked under behind the little archway thing, so anyway, for what that's worth.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, wasn't there a question about lumens, or am I remembering, wasn't there a question about the amount of lumens?
That came up at committee, but Mr. Sims brought it up.
I thought, didn't he say, he said something, I can't remember what he said. He did have a question.
What was the question?
How many lumens it was. He told us, I can't remember though.
Okay, I thought that was a takeaway.
I think it was...
I don't know, is what I remember.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, I had asked a question about if that information could be provided, and I think there was a statement made at committee that it was comparable to the other signs that are there now.
Yeah, I think that's...
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I got one, but, so, the sign looks fine. I do have a question about the internal illumination. I understand that the rest of, there are many other businesses there that are already illuminated that were allowed under our old ordinance, but the new one, you know, we, again, we passed it for a reason, and so if we're going to enforce it, it needs to be enforced, in my opinion, and so, that's not to say that there should never be variances, but I don't know that grandfathering this one in with the other, because the other ones are, in essence, makes a lot of sense. I think it would be better to, me personally, to start not allowing, making all the businesses in there comply with the ordinance as they come up. So, so anyway, that's my position, and anyone else got questions or comments? Mr. Wolverton?
So, I know in the past, large discussion is, you know, hardship, and I think, you know, Counselor Smith just kind of pointed to something that I think makes potentially these specific businesses, I cannot remember the extent to which the sign ordinance carries throughout. Is it all of downtown area?
Yes.
Okay. And kind of without exception? Yeah, I don't know, I'm struggling with it a little bit because it is pretty far removed from the roadway, there are...
I don't disagree, in my opinion, the fact that there's a monument sign out front eliminates that hardship in my mind, but, you know, again, everyone should make their own decision about it.
Is the monument sign eliminated?
Yes.
And I will say, there is a lot of business names on that monument sign, and it's about, it's about that big.
They're tiny.
Yeah, they're tiny.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm struggling a little bit.
Okay.
I would just agree, I think that, in my opinion, the hardship is, which is self-induced, but is the design of the building, those arches, like you said, they do really, they're dark, I mean, that area back in there is dark, cuts off the signage, I would agree with that assessment.
Okay. I have a question for the applicant, is the illumination for business hours only?
Is illumination for business hours only?
Yes.
Will they turn it off at night when they're closed?
Usually, that depends on the actual business, you know, is it, it has to have a time clock or photocell to turn off, you know, you know, but, I mean, I don't believe that that is our decision. It would be the, you know, ensuring, are they going to keep their sign on all day?
Sure, in other words, you're just supplying the sign, the business has to make that decision.
That's fair.
They have to make that decision on their side. But we do, I mean, in order to pass inspection, it does have to have some sort of cutoff switch, a photo cell, time clock, along with the disconnect switch on the outside of the sign.
And so if, from that aspect, should we make that a, if we wanted to, would that be a condition?
I think the business owner would have to proffer it.
Yeah, I think the business owner would have to.
And the business owner isn't here, so.
Okay.
When we install, we do give them a courtesy and ask them, what time would you like your sign to come on? What time would you like your sign to come off? And then we try to explain to them when daylight saving times happen, and you do have power outages, et cetera, this happens to the time clock, so you have to reset it and stuff, because some, a lot of them, it'd be coming on during the day and going off at night due to power outages and other stuff like that.
Yeah, I think the business owner would probably have to proffer that. So, I don't know that that can be done tonight.
I would suggest we carry it over and see if the business owner could.
I would, I'm ready to make a motion, if that's okay. If you're ready to entertain one, I would move to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Andrews and a second from Ms. Nelms. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Any, any opposed? Aye. And an abstention. So that leaves us with eight to one to one. All right, so that will be Resolution 22-178. I was the note, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, 22-09-22, public hearings set for tonight for consideration of front yard fence variance at 501 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Cindy Kirkpatrick and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week and, oh, sorry, it's on the next page, sorry. But it four to zero, five to zero to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Ms. Gier.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Kirkpatrick, I assume?
Hello.
If you will, just tell us about your request.
Okay, well, the site, I'm on the corner lot of Theta and Oxmore, and the fence that was put in by a prior owner did not have a permit, and it's right on the property line, and I want to replace that fence, but the ordinance, or the ordinance says 15 feet in. And my home is not even 15 feet from the street, so that's the first variance request. The second is for front yard picket fence, because I'm on that corner lot and have a lot of foot traffic. There's a lot of foot traffic, walking, the dogs, but also from the Palisades area down that cul-de-sac on the Oxmore area.
Okay.
Brian, could you put up the, the, thank you.
And so the first request is what's going down the upper right side of the sheet, correct? And, and the yellow line there?
Brian, will you go to the second page of this exhibit? Yeah, that's, that's the existing non-conforming privacy fence we're talking about that is on the property line. In fact, if you look at, look down at the survey there below it, the fence is actually out into the right of way just a bit, so indemnification agreement would need to be included if this were approved to stay.
Okay. Let me check. Is there anybody else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for questions or comments from council.
I do have a quick question about the fence, because on the picture of the fence, it does not look like it comes out in front of the house, but on the drawing, it looks like it does. But it doesn't, right? It goes to the, is that to the back corner of the house?
That's to the back corner.
Okay, I, that drawing is just weird.
The first picture is the plan, the landscape plan.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And the rest of that fence is a low picket fence.
Okay, well.
Yeah, so it's designated that way on the drawing, I see.
Yeah, okay.
So there's the privacy fence and the picket fence, or is the distinction?
So really, technically, the picket, I mean, that part that comes out in front of the house, that's a second front yard fence.
Yes.
Because it's extending out in front of the front corner of the house.
There's a, that's the second request, right?
No, no, no.
That would be a third.
There's another fence up here in front. So there's a fence up here, and then there's a fence out here, but it comes out in front of the house, which makes it a front yard fence.
Yeah, so, I think what's the easiest way to look at this, I don't know how it's applied for, but the easiest way to look at it is, you've got the privacy fence that's replacing the existing fence. That requires a variance and an indemnification, because it's in the right of way. Then there's the first section of the picket fence that's on the side of the house, that I think Ms. Smith is probably right, would be a second front yard fence. And also, I'm having trouble seeing, also in the right of way?
Yes.
It looks like it to me.
Well, it's not, it's not built yet.
Right, but I mean, it would be in the right of way.
It would be if it were built. If it lines up with the rest of the fence. All right.
It's not, my house is not even really lined up with the property line, so this is just the plan, and this is not even finalized in terms of the driveway, so they might be enclosed.
Yeah, that, that doesn't show what's there today. Where is Oxmore on your plan?
In front of the house.
On the front, so today, there's no driveway. That's not actual today, okay.
So, so we've got the privacy fence, the first picket fence on the side, and then the picket fence that wraps around the front. I think we actually got three things we're sort of considering here. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, the, but part of the side would be legal, up to the building line, but are there?
Actually not, because that's a front yard.
No, up, no, up until the front built, half of that went on the, on the, on that side.
Yeah, but that's, she's on a street.
It's a secondary front because it's more locked.
It's a front.
So even that on the side, and now it's like.
Yeah, so, with regard to the privacy fence, I think it's a second front yard fence because it's on a corner lot, correct, Mr. Pugh?
That's correct.
And then, secondly, it is also, we've got a setback issue with that, with the privacy fence, correct?
That's correct.
And then, third, it's in the right of way.
Yeah, and that was really my question, is sightline. Turning right onto Oxmore is challenging with that privacy fence, but that, that's just, I don't want you to have to move the fence, but it's, it's, it's challenging to see traffic coming from that direction.
But this house is actually not on what you think of Oxmore.
I know exactly where it is.
It's a short oxmore.
And when you're, when you're going to turn right onto Old Oxmore Road, which is Old Oxmore Road to me, I'm, I'm just asking you about sightline.
You'll be looking at a picket fence at that point, to be assured, a C through fence.
I'm talking about the existing fence.
The existing fence.
Which is in the right of way.
It's at the back of the house. It's back away. It's not at the corner.
Have you not driven it? When you drive right past the fence, if you're turning right, you cannot see onto Oxmore.
See, I, I don't think that's true, because the fence is behind you.
Okay, well, I drove it today, that's what I noted, so.
That, that was not my biggest concern.
So you don't, you don't see any sightline issues with where the current fence sits?
Yeah, it's hard for me to say yes or no at this point.
When you're on Theta, going to Old Oxmore.
You're coming, coming this way on.
No, you're going the other way.
So you gotta turn around.
Turn around.
Brian turns around. You're saying right there, you have to see.
I don't see how, there's nothing up there at that corner.
Okay.
I don't see that.
Not even a stop sign.
No, there's, that's true.
Which would be nice to have one, by the way.
Add that to the agenda.
Thank you, that's all, that's all I needed to see, thank you.
So, and I told you this the other night in the meeting, you know, typically with front yard fences, we have granted them only to folks who have a real hardship, and in this case, the hardship has typically been a special needs child who might dart into the street or try to run out the front door to try, try to provide some level of safety. I just don't see a hardship here. I, I know where you are, and I understand that there are businesses across the street, but those businesses were there already. I do think if, I think, I, I really don't have a problem with rebuilding the fence. I mean, the fence is what the fence is, but I don't think it needs to extend out to the front of the house, because I think then you do start to get into some situations where, you know, there might be some sighted distance issues. If it goes to the same place it is now, that isn't an issue for me, but that's where I think the fence should end. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of adding an additional fence in front at the street on the Oxmore side, because I just don't see a hardship for that. I think it looks nice, I do, I just don't think there's a real hardship need for that, so that's just my opinion.
Anybody else have a question or comment? Ms. Smith, was that a motion to approve the variances as to the privacy fence, but not as to anything else?
That would be a motion to approve the privacy fence excluding the, the picket part at the front, but to replace the fence as it exists today.
To replace the existing fence.
In the right of way with the indemnification agreements, and, yes, Mr. P.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, because Mr. Kendrick was asking me about the same thing. That fence is existing, it's not going to be replaced, but it was fairly recent, you can see the boards are not even that weathered yet. It was built without a permit.
By the previous owner.
I understand it was built by a previous owner.
Yeah, 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 right.
But it was built without a permit, and when the plan came to me for a sort of an all-inclusive landscape, hardscape plan, one of my comments was, I'm not, I'm not able to approve a permit until that comes into compliance.
Oh, okay, so basically, we're just approving the fence as it already exists, so that it is compliant, so that she can do the other things?
Yes.
Okay, I got it, okay. So then, I guess the correct motion would be to approve the work in the right of way in the indemnification agreement and the setback variance, right?
I'll second that.
Okay. But not the picket fence in the front, and not the picket on the sticking out from that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Mr. Harden. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ten to zero and will be Resolution 22-179. All right, next item, 23-09-22, public hearings set for tonight for consideration of a secondary front yard fence variance at 320 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Jason Russell of Homeward, Homewood Hardware and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, sorry, committee voted, I mean, met last week, voted five to zero to defer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrews.
All right. So with that, I will open the public hearing. I believe we have representatives of the applicants here. So if you will, just introduce yourselves. I see you're already signing in.
I'm Jason Russell.
David Hopper.
All right. If you will, just tell us about your application.
We're applying for a fence for the side of the Ace Hardware we're putting in at 320 Oxmore. The purpose of the fence is to provide a secure location to store things like bag mulch, topsoil, potting soil, that, your typical sort of outside stuff, and then also have a place for when we unload trucks to secure or store merchandise before it gets moved into the store to stock.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item?
I am.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm Sandy Bergeron, and I live near there, and I walk past there all the time. And I know there are a lot of people from the bus stop, which is also up the street, not very far, and people that go back and forth to the Palisades, and also a lot of homeless people, and that is a very insecure location, so these people need that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Yeah, Mr. Wolverton?
Can you remind me the height of the gate, or fence, sorry?
Eight foot.
Okay. And then, you talked about putting some sort of additional, it's chain link with some sort of privacy, there we go, netting or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, over time, that stuff does get torn up, I'm over here, by the wind and the, and the weather.
We would, we would anticipate replacing it periodically, every couple, you know.
Looks good.
At what point did it, it didn't look good, yeah.
Is there anything in addition to what's shown there?
Well, the.
Anything on top of the fence? I just didn't.
There is an awning that, you know, he went to the meeting for last week, that would go over, the same footprint as the fence that would attach to the building and go over the fenced in space.
Gotcha. Okay.
And I think we talked about in the meeting last week that it wasn't quite as far out as it appeared on that original drawing. Is that right? That it was a little bit further back?
That's right. It's at least 15 feet from the, from the, I don't have the exact dimensions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I know it's between 15 to 20 feet, say, from the curb.
Okay.
You actually turn in.
Okay.
And I know the architect did draw some additional striping for the lot that we would put in to, you know, for us having in and out arrows to help keep traffic, you know, to help with the sightlines.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ten to zero as well, and will be Resolution 22-180.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 15-07-22, public hearings set for November 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of annexation for board of education property into the city of Homewood, brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter. We will carry that item over for the public hearing on November 14th. Next item, 08-09-22, public hearings set for October 24, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone 536 Cobb Street from Gerd to WHD, West Homewood District. The applicant is James Parsons of Shoal Engineering, and the owner is Village Creek Development. This would facilitate potential future development. It comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of eight to zero with a favorable recommendation. And we will carry that item over for our next meeting on October 24th. Which brings us to our committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved, ten to zero. Which brings us to other new business. First item, 02-10-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a secondary front yard fence variance at 2831 16th Place South, brought to us by Jason Hale of Willow Homes and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for October 24 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 03-10-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of front yard fence variances at 2738 18th Street South, brought to us by David Lorclerbaum and Cale Smith. We will also set that public hearing for October 24th at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 04-10-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances at 2808 18th Street South, brought to us by Megan McCurry of Advanced Sign and Lighting LLC and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing also for October 24 at 6:00 p.m. 05-10-22, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of September 27, 2022, through October 10, 2022, brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter. I happen to know that this was Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, I got to it late today. Put on my speed readers and tore through that P O log. I did have a couple of questions, but nothing that I believe warrants holding up the approval, so I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Gualtney, a second for Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved, ten to zero, and will be Resolution 22-181. 06-10-22, request to authorize the mayor to rescind Resolution 22-67 and cancel contract with NAFCO, NAFCO. This is the item for the, what would have been the new ambulance. They have agreed to cancel that contract for us without any penalty or problem, so we just need to rescind that resolution.
Motion to rescind that resolution.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ten to zero and will be Resolution 22-182. All right, last item, 07-10-22, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for ambulance transport services. This is the item that we talked about at length in, in the budget hearings. The contract has been approved by the fire department and has been approved by the ambulance company and Mr. Kendrick as well. So it is ready to be signed, and we are ready to get this in motion, so I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is ten to zero and will be Resolution 22-183, which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
I have a motion.
All right. Before we get started on council comments, let me mention some scheduling things, because we have holidays coming up. things, because we have holidays coming up. First, with regard to Thanksgiving, it would really make things easy if we could go ahead and meet on the Monday of Thanksgiving if we have enough people here. So I thought I would take a poll of anyone who knows they are not going to be here that Monday of Thanksgiving. That is November 21st. Ms. Nelms, Mr. Gualtney, but it looks like we will have plenty, so we will go ahead and meet that day and won't have to double up on anything. All right, when we hit December, we have a, have a, there's no way to avoid it, so we will have both committee and council on December 19th. And then, come January, January 2nd, Monday, January 2nd is obviously the holiday for New Year's Day this year, so we will have committees on Tuesday, January 3rd, that week, because January is troublesome too, because we have a bunch of holidays, so. Yep. All right, so, appreciate everyone giving us information on that. So, Mr. Gualtney, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not believe I need to set public safety, as there are no new items this week. Let's double check, sorry. No, no, no new items, so I will not set public safety this week. Otherwise, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gier?
I don't have any announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Did Wyatt, did Wyatt already take off? I was trying to see if there was an update on the Wellington Butte Road item. I'm trying to think, was there anything else?
Is that the only item you got?
It appears that way.
Well, if you want to go ahead and set it, I mean, if y'all don't have anything, we'll just move on to the next meeting afterwards, so, I mean, it doesn't hurt to set it.
True. Okay, we'll set it for after.
After finance.
Finance.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, Fire Department last week responded to a fire in our neighborhood again, unfortunately. Seems like there's been several recently, but response time was quick. They fully extinguished everything quickly and efficiently. From my understanding, the main living room, nobody was in, inside, but the main living room was really the only thing that got charred, and, and it wasn't even the wood framing, so they got there quickly and got it taken care of, so kudos to, to them again for everything they do on a daily basis. And then really, just, last thing, I was just gonna give my daughter a quick little birthday shout-out. Ruby just turned 11, so we had a birthday party. The water was 72 degrees, and the girls stayed in the water pretty much the entire time, so I was impressed. But yeah, we, we love her, and we appreciate everything she's doing, and excited about where she's going. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thanks. I just want to send a reminder to all that there's a Ward 2 opening for the beautification board still. It closes on October 24th, so still need applicants for that. Also, the beautification board met today. I was unable to participate, but our chair is here, so grateful for Ravi Patel for stepping into that role and this being his first meeting, so thanks for that. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee will meet at 5 o'clock, and Mr. Wolverton, my, my son is 22 today, but he would be really angry if I put up his picture up there, but he's, he's, he's 22 today, so. Anyway, he didn't have a swim party, but anyway, and, did I know? He could have, yeah, he is a lifeguard. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I want to say thank you Chandler for staying for the meeting. Thank you for, and I'm really happy about the, the award, I mean, the recognizing Down Syndrome and appreciate, and it's good, good to see y'all, so thanks for bringing your sister and your mother. So thank you. That's all I have to know.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Smith?
Um, Special Issues to follow Public Works, and the Historic Preservation Commission meets tomorrow night here on the fourth floor at 7:00. I also will be unable to attend that meeting, but they will be there doing good work, so.
Thank you. Ms. Nelms?
No comments tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I do need to go ahead and set P and D. We're still working through the fence ordinance, so I will set that, and then I also want to thank Bram. Our, the president of the Hollywood Garden Club went around to look at all the different triangles and noticed several different trees that, one that I walked by every single day that I didn't notice at all was in need of removal, and Bram went out right away and looked at it and made arrangements with Berkeley, and it is down, didn't take but a day. So I want to thank Abby Mann from the Hollywood Garden Club. I want to thank Bram and Berkeley for taking care of that. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Harden?
One is, I think we have a BZA opening coming up that we need to fill, so we'll do that.
We, we're gonna get to that one. We, we got a few weeks, but yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're coming to it.
Secondly, I want to, if you ever want to meet anybody who wants to extend out an 18th birthday, you need to meet Suzanne Harden. So her 18th birthday is not till tomorrow, but she started at noon on Friday, bringing a bunch of girls up to the lake. By Sunday, the boy, there were some boys included that were just there to visit on Sunday, and then last night, they had another party that included more people that she had, and then tonight, they're all at my house, 15 girls at my house, having some kind of party without me being there, and I'm not invited. So, happy 18th birthday to Suzanne Harden, who has figured out how to extend her birthday as long as she can.
All right, thank you, everyone. Just recap, we'll start with Finance at 5:00 and then do Public Works, Special Issues, and then P and D. I don't have any comments tonight, so that's it. We will go ahead and adjourn this meeting and see everyone in a couple weeks.